All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please note those in attendance?
All will be noted.
Will you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll jump right into the agenda here. Item 2A, minutes of the regular city council meeting for May 13, 2025. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes. A motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries, the minutes are approved. Item 2B, minutes of the city council work session on May 20, 2025. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes. A motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I should have abstained, I wasn't there.
Okay, one abstention. Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Item 3, adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes, corrections, amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we have an agenda. Item 4, consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. A motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, consent agenda is approved. All right, on to fun stuff. Item 5A, swearing in of assistant fire chief. So Chief Peterson, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We're gonna swear in Brian Eichelberg, who's our new assistant chief of training and operations tonight. He was here at one previous council meeting, but that was day two, and we didn't really wanna throw him into it that quickly. So that's where he started. I'm gonna briefly talk about a little bit of his experience, just so the council's aware of it. So Chief Eichelberg has got a bachelor's degree in nursing. He has a master's degree in emergency services administration and leadership. He's been in the field, fire and EMS fields, for 19 years now. He came to us from Lake Johanna Fire Department, where he served full-time as a captain there. He's worked at, and still works at, LifeLink 3, previously as a flight nurse. He's also an ECMO specialist, which is, I can't pronounce the full word, it's very difficult. But what it is, is a heart-lung transport program, or bypass program, rather, which is done in the field. So it's very, very intense work that he does. He was also, worked at the University of Minnesota as a nurse emergency department. North Memorial as a nurse in the trauma and ICU departments, and emergency department. North Memorial air care, and also critical care. He's a tactical paramedic. And he also served active duty in the United States Army as a flight combat medic in the 82nd Airborne. He did two tours in Afghanistan. So he has a ton of experience. He and I have known each other casually for a number of years, and we're just really excited to have him here. He's, over the last seven weeks, has adapted himself well into our program and really done a lot of great things. So we're happy to have him here, and we're gonna go ahead with the ceremony at this time.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Brian Eichelberg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And will discharge.
And will discharge.
And faithfully execute.
And faithfully execute.
The duties devolving upon me.
The duties devolving upon me.
As a member of the fire department.
As a member of the fire department.
For the city of White Bear Lake.
For the city of White Bear Lake.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now we're gonna have his wife Courtney and his sons Carson and Owen come up and place his badge. It was embarrassing, so they're not gonna enjoy it.
Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for the opportunity to serve the city of White Bear Lake. I'm excited for the opportunity and looking forward to doing great things.
Thank you.
You all enjoy your meeting, I'll watch it later.
Thank you all for coming out to support the swearing in, appreciate it. Enjoy the cupcakes.
All right, item 5B, 2024 financial audit. Ms. Kinzvater.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, today we have Brad Faltesek with ABDO here to review our 2024 financial statements with you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Should be bringing the, it's on the screen, perfect. I think you probably have in your packet as well. So again, yeah, I am in here again to present the audit of the 2024 financial statements. So feel free to interrupt me or ask any questions throughout. We can certainly try to get through those as we go through the report as well. Otherwise, or we can wait till the end, it doesn't matter. So what we'll go through is, just give you a little bit of a heads-up. Audit results, we'll start with that first. Our opinion on the report. Then we'll go through general fund results, other governmental fund results, enterprise funds. And then we'll, at the end, we'll have some statistical information where we compare your city to other cities of similar size, within the county and throughout the state of Minnesota. So the first slide is our auditor's opinion and on our report on Minnesota law compliance. Related to the auditor's opinion, we do design our tests. This is what you're paying for when you have the audit, is to get this opinion on your financial statement. So we'll design our tests and look at higher risk areas, high dollar areas within the audit to make sure things are recorded properly, make sure that things are recorded that the same Minnesota says they sent to you, the county says they sent to you, all those types of things. Those large dollar revenue streams are being recorded properly in your system. And then we'll look at your expenditures as well. Look at your capital outlay, those are higher dollar amounts. Payroll, those are also high and some of your debt service expenditures. So look at a lot of those different areas, make sure they're quoted properly and reported correctly in the financial statements. We are issuing an unmodified or a clean opinion on your financial statements, so it's what you're looking for when you have an audit performed. The state auditor's office requires us to issue a Minnesota law compliance report as well. So they require us to go through a series of checklists and make sure you're following different state statutes that they want us to test as part of your, as your financial statement audit. So we'll go through those checklists, testing things like how you're depositing, investing your money, how you're issuing debt, entering into contracts and bidding and those types of things. And take a look at those statutes, and if there's anything in there that we feel that you didn't follow or those types of things, we'll issue a finding. And we are not reporting any findings related to any of those either. So clean opinions on both those reports. Any questions on those? Then we'll get into the results of the general fund. So this chart looks at your general fund, fund balance compared to your following year's budget. You do have a policy to keep this at a minimum of 35% to 50%. So within that range or above, you can see that black shaded area is the 35% to 50%. Your fund balance finished at 50.8, which is that reddish colored line. And then the yellow line at the top is the budget. So that's what your percentages are based on. So you're staying right at the kind of the upper end of that range that you established as a council a number of years back. So stand steady there, so that's really what you're looking for there. Next slide, your general fund budget to actual. So we have your original budget, your final budget, where your actual numbers came in, and then that variance from budget. So you can see your revenues were about $670,000 above what you'd budgeted. And your expenditures were about $1 million less than what you budgeted. The majority of that, the revenues came in. It was, you did, if you remember, combine the ambulance fund within the general fund for, this was the first year in 2024. So some of those, the ambulance revenue came in about $230,000 above what you'd budgeted. Kind of a hard one to budget. But then your interest revenue came in above budget as well. So that's really what made up a lot of that over-revenue than what you budgeted for. Your expenditures, a lot of that $1 million was related to, almost half of that $1 million was related to personnel services and just unfilled positions throughout the year. So primarily the police and ambulance departments. Then we had transfers in, transfers out, ending, increased the fund balance of $900,000. So you can see, with that increase, you were able to stay within that 35% to 50% range. So that's what you're looking for again. Next slide, we have, next two slides, we have general fund revenues and expenditures just over the last three years within the general fund. So comparing how the revenues have been trending, you can see your taxes have trended up each year with those increases. Charges for services had a jump this year. Again, bringing the ambulance fund and those charges for services into the general fund, that's really what caused that jump. And then your state and federal aid stayed pretty consistent with prior years. And then your other includes transfers and those types of things. So pretty consistent there, other than the tax that increased and your charges. Your expenditures on the next slide here, we have general government has stayed pretty consistent the last three years. Public safety, again, with bringing this ambulance fund into this year, we had that jump with ambulance expenditures and public safety. Public works and parks and rec stayed pretty much the same. Had some additional transfers out, that's what's in that other fund this year, transfers to the equipment acquisition in Minnesota Building Fund this year to have that, some little bit of a spike there in the other category. So that's really all with the general fund. We go into special revenue funds next. So these funds are funds where you either have a committed or restricted revenue source. So we have these six funds here. Really what you're looking for in special revenue fund, are you collecting enough revenues to support your expenditures? So we had an increase in our, in your surface water pollution prevention fund this year by about $250,000. There's just projects came in less than what you were budgeting, so that increased that fund balance. Then with the housing fund, that last fund had a $154,000 increase. That was a newly established fund this year with some housing, housing money that came from the state that's restricted for specific purposes. I believe you're gonna be getting that each year, if I'm not mistaken. Then this just shows where your fund balances are. So committed, restricted, assigned is where you have the majority of that restricted increase this year because of the housing fund. We're getting our capital project funds. These are the funds you have set aside for capital projects within the same. This could be buildings, this could be street projects, those types of things that you set money aside for. Big decrease this year in the municipal building fund. You can see in 2022 and 2023, you had significant fund balances in there that related to the bond proceeds for the public safety facility. Spending that down had decreased that fund balance just over three and a half, just under $3.5 million this past year. So that project's done, so what you do with that municipal building fund, I'm sure you have plans for that going forward. But then your pavement management fund increased fund balance about $1,200,000. There again, interest revenue, you had good interest earnings this year, so that had significant interest in that fund as long, as well as some other project came in under which you had budgeted, so. That's all, those funds, capital projects. And then this is the same thing with where your fund balances are, restricted, committed, assigned. That reduction in restricted from '23 to '24, those monies were restricted. That was the bond monies restricted for the public safety building that were spent down. Debt service funds, this was a little harder to read. How to, you have a few debt service funds here. So total cash, total assets, and remaining bonds outstanding. So total bonds outstanding, $37 million, just over $37 million, and then the maturity dates there. So what we're looking for here is, do you have enough cash and assets to support these bond, or these debt service requirements? And right now, all your cash balances are positive. Your assets are a little bit higher than your cash just because you have taxes receivable, assessments receivable, those types of things in these funds. And then your debt service requirements for the next 10 years. So right around $3 million in debt service requirements. I know you're gonna be issuing another bond this year, so that will affect this. This doesn't include any of the new bonding that was done in 2025, or that will be done in 2025. Your water fund, so this is just a cash basis, looking at your operating receipts, operating disbursements. And if you have any debt service requirements in these enterprise funds, we have that in the black shaded. So what we're looking for here is, are your operating receipts meaning, being able to cover both your disbursements and your debt service requirements? You can see in the water fund, each of the years presented, it has met that, which then you can see on your cash balances on the next page, have stayed, have increased slightly each year as a result of that. And then you can see that black line, that's a minimum reserve that we would recommend as auditors and finance would recommend having in there 50% of your operating expenses, plus debt service for the next calendar year. So 1.2 million is where that minimum would be, and you're right around that $2 million mark. So above that, so anything above that really would be available for capital, those types of things. So our fund, similar results, you don't have any, haven't had any debt in this fund for the last four years, but your receipts have been, be able to support your disbursements. And you can see on the next slide, then your target line hasn't really changed, but you have been increasing your cash balance each year in this fund. Refuse fund, again, each of the years. This is really designed as a break-even fund. You try to charge out what you collect, or you pay out what you collect. So, and you can see there's really no debt in this, there's no capital in this fund, so have that 25% operating cost there rather than the 50%. You're not, you're not needing an extra funding to support your capital in this fund. License Bureau, this one, other than 2022, your receipts have been, have met your disbursements. You can see your cash is quite a bit less in this fund. You're under $100,000 in 2022. You've been able to improve that the last two years, but still under that minimum of, we got 25% on here too. Pioneer Manor, here you do have some debt, but it has fallen off quite a bit in 2024. And then, so you can see that in 2024, you can see your cash balance has increased because of that. And above that minimum target. Internal service funds, these are funds you just charge out to have a central location to charge out expenditures for the entire city. So here you're charging out different things to other departments that they're paying into these funds to pay out those central costs. So this is really designed as almost a break-even as well. You can see each of the years have been pretty close to break-even, have steadily increased your cash to $6.7 million in here. This chart shows cash investment balances for the last three years. You can see the last bar in 2024, we missed the, the capital projects. Chunk of this didn't get in the bar here, but you can see the numbers have stayed pretty consistent. 51 million in 2022 is your total cash. This is all cash within the city. 53 million, almost 54 in '23, and then 54.2 in 2024. You can see what's shown there in 2024, those bars haven't really changed as far as the colors and size of them from 2023. Adding that capital in there, it's about the same size as well. So no big changes in any one of these categories for cash balances.
So why isn't the capital in there? I don't understand.
It's a formula issue in the chart, a formula issue in the chart?
Oh.
Yeah, it was a total mistake, it should be. But it would just bring it up and right above that 53. I noticed that today. So then here's where we start comparing your city to other cities in the county, across the state. And then we have a population of 20,000 to 30,000 population too. So that, the population that you are class three city is like 20,000 to 80,000. So we tried to get a population in there that was more closely resembled you because you otherwise should be way at the bottom of that, that class. So anyway, tax rates, you can see that of your peer groups, of these three other peer groups here, you can see you're on the lower end at 27%, where your peers are at 43, 33, and 45%. So tax rates have stayed consistently low, somewhat trending up as you issue debt and those types of things, but still fairly low. We don't have data for 2023 yet. State hasn't sent that out even as of today. So I think last year they sent it out sometime in May, but we don't have the information yet. So that's why we have the two years without any information there. Taxes per capita, again, have steadily increased slightly each year, but again, quite a bit lower than your peer groups in this category. Long-term debt, have issued some bonds over the last few years. You can see how that your line has gone up, actually even above the peers here as far as all your outstanding debt per capita. I try to relate this to not seeing any of these other rates go up quite as far. So you're able, you've been able to pay your debt other sources other than just raising your taxes. Expenditures per capita with your debt, again, seeing that other chart, we spent it about $3 million per cap, or total for the city on all your debt. This is just per capita basis. So in 2022, you're above your peer groups there. And then we don't have the peers for 23 or four, but fairly consistent though with what your peers were at in '21. The last couple charts here, this one is the current expenditure. So this takes out any capital expenditures, takes out any debt service requirements, those types of things. And at your governmental funds, so not looking at enterprise funds either, just look at your day-to-day operating type expenditures and compares it to your peers. So again, your, the last '23 and '24, you're approaching where the peers were at in 2022. Given inflation, they're likely gonna have inflation too. You're likely gonna be under your peers in these last two years as well. But as far as day-to-day comparisons, 2020 through 2022, you've been significantly less. So, but you have since 2020 steadily increased, and that's lots to do with your inflation. Last one, capital expenditures per capita. This is gonna fluctuate. I'm not sure I really even like it in here, but you do like to see what you're comparing for capital compared to your peers, I think, sometimes. So 2023, you had majority of that at your public safety building by adding that in there. Even 2024, your public safety facility was a lot of that. So, and then '21 and '22 is where your peers have been spending, where they were at with spending as far as capital type expenditures per capita. So that's, that's everything. Now I'll take your questions.
Counsel, any questions? Counsel member Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Ramiroff, it's for you or not, Mr. Faltesek. But where's the community reinvestment fund? I always get that name wrong. The $6 million or so we drew down, we're holding steady. Now that doesn't appear on this audit, and if, maybe I missed it, or if it's not in here, why wouldn't it be in here?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that would be in the capital projects fund?
If we can get that slide.
Right there, right in the middle. So went down about $400,000 this year. Finished at $6.5 million.
Okay, all right, good. I just didn't see it, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Counsel member Edberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Faltesek, so we had what struck me as being an unusual, unusually positive balance in fiscal year '24. We had greater than budgeted revenues and substantially lower than budgeted expenditures. The total range was, at least to my recollection, larger than most other prior years. Was there any surprises in this year's combinations or anything that would say, you know, something has shifted and you may wanna change how you budget or how you estimate revenues and expenses going forward? Or is this part of kind of a normal chop and churn and we just happen to get lucky on interest rates and blah, blah, blah? How do you?
Well, interest rates, I have seen interest in many cities, most cities, they did much better than prior years. So that definitely is a contributing factor, and that's very tough to budget and forecast. So that's one thing. Another thing that happened this specific year that was unusual is you combined the ambulance fund within the general fund. So that's another variable that, and you really don't know what you're gonna get for ambulance, ambulance calls and those types of things. You can kind of base it on, but some years you get more, and this year you had more than you expected, I guess, and collected about $230,000 more than what you were expecting. Outside of that, you were under 4% of your, within 4% of your budget. So it's not that far off. The dollars look big, but as far as your overall budget, it's under 4% for the revenue piece. So expenditures, you were within 6% of your budget. Still not crazy. I mean, the number looks big, $1 million under budget, but again, expecting to fill different positions within the city and not filling them, I think you gotta budget to, if you have a position there, you're expecting to fill it, so you gotta budget it. So, and if you don't fill it, I don't know if that's lucky, because I think you'd wanna have those positions filled. So it's just the circumstance you're in.
And then my read on all of our individual enterprise funds, the special funds and so forth, over the past three to four years, in most of those cases, we have had a rate adjustment that has increased revenues. The ending balances are all positive and stable, and I'm not, I... The ending balances are all positive and stable, and I'm not, I didn't find anything that caused, caused me concern. Are, are we healthy in all of our enterprise budgets and, and balances?
Yep, yep. Your, all your enterprise, enterprise funds, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, have positive increases this past year. So, and that's not always the case. I do, I would say you're healthy in all of them. There was one that, I'm trying to remember. I thought there was one that was somewhat lower than what the recommended balance would be. Yeah, License Bureau was just under, but going in the right direction, steadily going up. You were able to transfer money out of that fund. And if it wasn't, if it was in bad shape, you just wouldn't transfer that money out, I guess. So you're able to transfer out enough to keep it stable.
Okay.
So that'd be the only one.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. If we could just talk about the debt for a second. I think you had the debt worksheet with the different notes.
This one?
Yeah. So it's hard for me to read, but just, and maybe it's not a question for you so much, but since we're talking about it here. Obviously, we just did the, the big public safety building. So, you know, that's, what's the going forward? I mean, we're, our debt has gone way up. I mean, you saw some of the slides, you know, vis a vis other cities. I think if you look back in time, we've been really low, and so we've made a conscious effort to borrow some money for obviously the buildings, but also a fire truck, also streets now, which we never did for a long time. So what, I can't, I can't, can you tell the age or the maturity of some of these things? Is that the last column there, like when they're going to start? So what is the sort of prognostication on some of these dropping off? If we don't add any new, does it, does it come back down?
Yeah, the first one, and actually the first one listed there drops off in '28. The next one is '33. After that, late 2030s.
Okay, so a couple will drop off.
2036 and a, yeah, a couple will drop off the next eight years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, very good. Thank you for the report.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, counsel, we've got a resolution before us, accepting the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Motion's a second. Any further discussion on this? Councilmember Edberg.
I would only note that our staff does a fine job of preparing our statements, monitoring our budget, managing our expenditures, monitoring our budget, and these are fine results. And I just want to express my appreciation to staff and management.
Well said.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is passed. Thank you again. All right, item six, public hearing, nothing scheduled. Item seven, unfinished business. Seven A, downtown parking lot project, order project approval plans and specifications and authorize advertisement for bids. Mr. Copy.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to go through a brief presentation here. Then we can answer any questions, but I'm going to run through each of the, start by going through each of the project areas of the four parking lots that we are proposed. This information is in the council packet. So kind of go through each one, kind of highlight the notable things that we are doing on each one, and then show you the layout that we've come up with in the plan. So the parking lot number one, as proposed, is at Third Street and Banning Avenue, the Market Fest Lot, is affectionately called. The general layout is maintained, slightly revising the ADA parking to meet current requirements, getting it more evenly distributed throughout the parking lot, closer to those entrances and, and to serve all of the businesses. We will do, it's quite old. The curb is failing, so we will do a complete curb replacement, full pavement replacement. And then the last two, we're going to be talking a little bit more in detail towards the end of my presentation. But we'll be replacing the sidewalk between the curb and buildings. Basically, that is, you know, full pavement, some decorative. Again, we'll chat about that in a little bit. And then also replace the lighting and power supply systems. So just as we've had our consultant review the, the lighting design, a lot of the old carriage lights that were, the wooden carriage lights are long since extinct. Just a couple of lights that were replaced at some point remain. I will also be getting the power supply system that we use for a lot of the events back up to code. Found out some just did not meet code and Excel would not allow us to continue with those, especially revising the power supply systems for the lighting systems. So again, pretty basic, replacing the, the lot generally the way it is. The next lot I'll get into is the Fifth End Banning Lot, Lot Number Two. We'll be proposing a slightly revised layout that we had presented a few meetings ago in our concept review. That includes removal of the fourth tree near the Fratellone's Hardware. We'll get more into that in a couple of slides. But we will keep the three, the cluster of three closer to Fifth Street, but removing that fourth tree closest to Fratellone's. I'll get into those reasons in a little bit. Also looking at revised ADA layouts to meet current requirements. Again, this one would get full curb and pavement replacement. The drainage is, parking lot was done in a number of phases over the years. So the drainage doesn't quite work perfectly, so we're adding some storm sewer inlets that will help with the, the drainage of that pavement, extend the life of it, improve safety. Won't have the low spots that collect ice. We will also be replacing the sidewalk between the curb and building similar to Lot One, as well as replacing the lighting system in that parking lot as well. Again, the revised layout, you can see the, kind of in the grayed out, we wanted to highlight the, kind of the revisions to the curb lines to get better flow and kind of maximize safety and flow throughout the parking lot as people park. You can see the curb island that houses that fourth tree to the top of the screen would be removed under this proposal. Otherwise, generally staying the same, just kind of revising a little bit to help with flow throughout the parking lot. And this is the concept that council had gravitated towards after the concept review back in April. So next up, this is kind of it with the parking stalls. I wanted to show the, kind of the grayed out background to show the revisions. This is what it would look like. Again, not all that different than what is out there today. We'll talk about trees next. On the left side of the screen is the cluster of three burrows that council directed staff to have remain. So generally staying within that larger island closer to Fifth Street. Staff is recommending, based on council input and further review. The, as you can see in the picture on the right, you can see about a third or more of that tree is, is basically dead. Will have to be pruned back and removed. You know, that's a significant branch, main branch of that tree. So staff does have concerns with liability from either not doing something to remain, to leave that side in place. Otherwise, removing that provides undue stress on the other side of the tree, potentially causing splitting or, and it is in a well or heavily used parking lot next to a sidewalk, cars. Opening up the city would obviously liability if something were to happen. It's also in a very small area, about a little less than 20 by 20, foot by foot. So a relatively small area for that size of tree to be growing. Obviously in decline, as indicated by one of our Rainbow Tree Care who did an inspection on it. Again, in decline, not a big area for it to continue to grow. I will note that the three that we are saving, we are going to go through some special efforts during construction, placing construction fencing around that entire green area so that no construction activity can, you know, basically behind the back of curb. We only need a foot or so behind that curb to get that replaced. So we're going to basically fence off that entire area around those trees. We also propose to, there's a, some treatments that Rainbow Tree Care, that we've reached out to them, that they recommend. One is being canvassed at. What that does is it inhibits canopy growth, but it focuses more growth in the root system. So kind of helping it with drought and shock during any kind of construction activities. Also, you know, again, it is a larger area than the fourth tree, but still not, you know, huge by any means. So that will help with strengthening those roots. They are pretty full canopy, a few dead branches, but like any tree, no real significant die-off. And the other thing that we are going to look at is giving it treatment for two-line chestnut borer, the new pest in the area. So Rainbow Tree Care has been seeing more and more of that affecting oak trees. So we are looking at, again, stress the construction. We're going to give it that just to, in case they do show up in the area, and it's not one more thing for the trees to have to deal with. The other thing, following construction, and we'd like to look at this in greater detail with Phase II the project, or staff would do it afterwards, is kind of the overall design of the area. Rainbow Tree Care recommended putting kind of a mulch ring around. You'll see like a lot of the trees that we plant, we put mulch around the tree, the, the trunk of the tree. That's to retain moisture, to kind of keep people off of it. So that would be proposed in this area. That will look at that or native plantings. That would help keep people from walking over the root systems and then also keeping moisture. So when you do have the, the mulch over a, around a tree, it helps keep moisture that either is put there or that naturally falls. So that we would hopefully help with maintaining those trees for a long time to come. Lot Three, this is the small lot near the bank at Fifth Street and Cook Avenue. A lot of people don't even know it's a public parking lot. So we'll also go back a little bit. We're going to put some temporary signage in until we come up with the overall signage package for the downtown area. But we'll put some signage that kind of indicates that these are public lots, as had been recommended by the study. But we'll kind of replace those as we move forward with the next couple of years with the, the, the street project portion, you know, kind of the Phase II, so that we kind of have everything, you know, look how we want it to look. But at least something simple to indicate that they are public lots. This lot really only needs pavement replacement. There's a few little pieces of curb that need to be replaced, but pretty, pretty easy lot to do. Again, you're hunting Ting Bank. Just, again, we'll mill up the existing surface of the pavement and replace a couple of curb panels and be in and out pretty quickly. The last lot that I'll talk about is the Armory Lot located at Third Street and Cook Avenue, again, behind the Armory. This has a little bit of minor layout to the parking lot. There's a couple of unused, kind of awkward medians that are in there. At the same time, we found an opportunity to widen the main center median. This gives us another two to three feet that will be housing the, the new lighting as well as additional trees in that area. So again, more area for those trees to grow. Also look at revised ADA parking to meet current requirements. I say full curb replacement. A lot of it has to be replaced. It's, again, this lot was done in a number of sections. There's one section on the north side behind the Armory and I forget the name, the Old Bigwood. Four deuces. So along that stretch, I get used to all these new names. But along that stretch, there's some relatively new curb when those businesses had done some improvement. So that will remain, but the most of it will be replaced. It's sinking, it's causing low spots. So we'll improve drainage in that parking lot as well. And then we'll replace the lighting system. Most of it doesn't work. We're also going to put in a new service. The, the old service actually was fed off of the Armory Building, which we no longer own. So it's kind of awkward to take their power. So we will be putting in a transformer that will service that. It will also service some of the future street lighting along the street projects. We're setting all of them up to do that. So this one in particular, we just didn't have our own service. But the, all of the lots that are getting lighting will also be able to service the adjacent street projects. The cool thing about this is it's all going to be LED lighting. So our consultant basically said you can feed a ton of lights off of a much smaller service today than you ever could with the, the old lighting. So, so again, pretty small lighting services that will be able to service quite a bit of area with. Again, I'll point out, you can see kind of the dash lines underneath, kind of the, a couple little, towards the left side of the screen, you can see kind of the couple of awkward little medians that jutted out, not quite sure why. And then the, the one on the east side is one that appears to be an old tree island that the tree didn't make it. And we'll be able to straighten that curb line out, but we're gaining all that area back in that center median for the previous area, which again, gives us more opportunity to plant trees along that center median. I'm going to go into lighting next. So this is what we have existing in the downtown area. So generally acorn style fixtures along Fourth Street. I picked Fourth Street. It shows the, kind of the overall feel of what we have down there. And then I bring up Lake Avenue. You can see the, a little bit different style. That's downlighting. That's generally used to flood the surface of an area, and we're talking about parking lots here tonight. So we really want to be able to provide light directly down. That's going to provide that safety and comfort to those that are using the parking lots. Especially during the study, we had a lot of folks that said, you know, we are, our employees work late at night, they're walking down the streets, they're parking in these lots. So just to be able to provide that safety, even for, you know, people, patrons using the restaurants and establishments in the downtown area. So that's what we have today. What we're proposing is kind of a combination, if you'll call it. It kind of has that acorn feel. The, the fixtures in the center, you can see kind of on a pole, that's not the pole we would use, but kind of some stock photos. The, kind of the line drawings on the right side of the screen is what we're proposing. And if I flip back one screen, you can see that's very similar to the light style used on Lake Avenue. So we're not introducing another light style per se. We're just kind of melding that fixture head. And again, I, when we get to the end, I welcome council's input on it. But the, the fixture provides a lot of downward with the LED elements in there, can provide a lot of that downlighting. And we can light the parking lot with relatively few lights, which obviously saves some money to, for the overall number. So that's the fixture that was recommended and chosen. Again, we would, I call out that we would do these in green, not the bronze, to match the existing downtown Stewart Highway 96. We have a lot of green lighting in town or, so that we wanted to kind of stick with that theme, otherwise. And then obviously the area north of, or Fourth Street into the north as well. Sidewalks, so this is where we're going to, I'm going to sway a little bit from the council memo. But if you look at the left side of the screen, this is what we have existing in the area that we're, we're looking at. So the, the parking lots have this, the, the streets south of Fourth Street all have the stamping along the main walk of the sidewalk. So right now, the issue with that is it doesn't meet ADA requirements. So even today, even the tool joints that we have, we have to use saw cut joints so that we minimize those tripping hazards. So the, the stampings along the main piece of the sidewalk isn't adequate anymore. But if you look to the right side, this is what we have to the north. So Fourth Street up onto the north, we have the gray concrete main walk aisle, and then we have the red borders. Initially in the council memo, we're concerned with, and our consultant was concerned with having the deep stamping of the brick pattern on the red surface. It's not necessarily treated as a walkway, but people that are crossing over it from their cars onto the sidewalk, it could be construed as and, and potentially cause that tripping hazard. Since that time, we've done more and more homework. We've looked at other options that would, could provide that similar pattern with a less deep imprint. So that would still kind of match the area north of Fourth Street that has that brick pattern, but yet still be more ADA compliant. more ADA compliant. So if council wishes, we would look at doing that option of some stamping along that concrete as well. We reviewed, again, the area of, the study recommended that colored concretes be used. It didn't dictate one or the other. Some people like, during some of the public input, some people liked gray or different colors. However, after looking at the areas in its entirety, it is primarily red. I shouldn't say primarily, 99% red. Even to the west of Highway 61, if you look at Cup and Cone in those areas, that's kind of the gray concrete with red brick pattern. Some of that is actual brick, you know, the paver stones, which can cause some issues as well. But generally, that red color. I will note that, that area that, on the pictures on the right, obviously, concrete fades. You know, the gray isn't perfect. Gray is it, you know, fresh poured concrete. The red isn't as bright and vibrant as it probably was the day it was poured 20-some years ago. One thing that we did look at is, again, again, I'll go back to the existing that kind of is north of Fourth Street, but a layout, I know the, a lot of the input that we got was to keep the downtown charming, historic. The picture on the right there is what, when we redid the concrete around the depot, we put kind of the accent diamonds in there, just to kind of restore or retain some of that historic brick, while providing an ADA compliant sidewalk. So whether we wanted to, or council would direct staff to do a darker color, I know it doesn't perfectly match to the north, but it still provides that, generally a red color. It provides the, we'd still do the brick pattern. So something to think about for a few minutes until we get to questions. Funding, this is what we have in the capital improvement plan for funding, pretty self-explanatory. Going to try to hit that. We obviously have to accept gulf for bids and accept, council have an opportunity to accept bids. So we'll see where, our estimate is pretty close to this. So we'll see where it all ends up here, if council authorized staff to gulf for bids here tonight. Lastly, project schedule, kind of in italics at the top, where we've been. Council order plans. We had a public hearing on the potential tree removal. We reviewed preliminary plans back at the end of April. We're here tonight to approve plans and specifications. If that moves forward and council authorizes staff, we would then publish an ad for bid next week. It would show up in the local paper. The end of June, we would open bids, award contracts, the first meeting in July, and then start construction following Market Fest. So Market Fest is the Thursday prior to that, and then get it hopefully significantly complete by the end of October. So there may be some restoration things that might carry into next spring, depending on how late things go, but generally complete by the end of the season here. So, so staff, based on the resolution, would direct council to consider adopting the attached resolution, which would order the project, approve the plans and specifications, and authorize ads for bids for the 2025 Downtown Parking Lot Reconstruct Project. So I'd recommend council consider that resolution. Also, we would accept any comments on the lighting and the sidewalks, or any other topic that I covered here in my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Cripe. Just as a preliminary thought, before we get into the substantive things, I know we spent a lot of time talking about trees on this, but if we can set that aside for a second, thank you for all the good work that went into this. We've got, these are big projects and a lot of big improvements that are going to come to the city, you know, well beyond just the trees, the sidewalks, the lighting, the ADA improvements, some of the kind of utility improvements for drainage. So I want this to kind of shift away from the trees as much as we can into, this is a great project and is Phase One of a two-part project, which will improve the whole downtown area. And so for that, I want us to look at this from a positive standpoint. And again, thank you for all the hard work. I'm sure it's going to be a good project. Couple of quick questions regarding the lighting and the color of the concrete. Does that need to be decided tonight? Or are we really just approving a budget and then we've got some tinkering that can happen later on?
Mayor, members of the council, typically, we would include that level of detail in the plans and specifications that we would then, so once we go for bids, that would show up in the paper and some of the construction publications. Contracts would need to bid on that. Not that if council changed their minds, we couldn't do a change order. It's typically not significant, you know, it's typically color, you know, typically the, I want to go to concrete first, the contractor would, you know, give us the, kind of like you go to the paint store and you have the color chips. You would say, which color do you want before we mix the concrete up? The question would be, is how that would come back to council for a final decision. The, as far as the lighting goes, a similar approach. You know, we would approve shop drawings. That would show the colors. Typically not a difference in cost between colors, per se. The fixture itself is more significant from a, one fixture to another, just like if you went to look at a fixture for your home, one, different fixtures can have significant cost differences. So.
And the fixtures, the fixtures that we, if we decide on fixtures, I assume it would be good for that to follow along with the Phase Two of the project and other parts where we're going to have those improvements. I mean, there's going to be more fixtures.
Mayor, members of the council, so as far as staff's thought on this, this is the parking lots. So this would get, this would be the only area that would have that style of lighting, because it's a downward-facing lighting that would provide that overall lighting for the park, surface of the parking lot. As it sits today, and obviously, there's a lot of time to discuss this, count or staff would recommend that the acorn-style lighting be continued through the, south of Fourth Street. It's already north of Fourth Street. It's out on Stewart. It's on Highway 96. So it's, it's a general theme throughout the community. So unless council wanted to significantly stray from that, that would be count or staff's initial recommendation. There is also some, in the study, some pedestrian-level lighting that was at least recommended, thrown out there to consider. And we'll look at that more at a design level, once we get to the street projects. So if there's significant corridors, there's some of those, I'll call them alleyways between, pedestrian alleyways between the buildings that may need a different style of lighting. So there's some other areas that need different style of lightings, but the parking lot generally would be the only areas that would get the style.
Very good. All right. Well, I'll be really brief with my comments on the tree. I support the resolution as is, I think. Keeping the three trees that we've discussed, and then getting rid of the fourth tree, as recommended, for very significant safety reasons, financial reasons, practical reasons, I think, strikes just the right balance between listening to the community, preserving our charm and character, while being just practical in terms of the engineering and costs associated with it. As far as the lights go, I think the ones that we picked out are kind of cool, so that works. And I'd be open to a darker, kind of, concrete accent color next to it. But I assume that would complement what, what we already have and what's going to be remaining even after Phase Two. So I'd be open to that concept. But I think there are very good reasons to move forward with the parking lots as proposed, and that would be my recommendation to the council. Council, questions, comments?
Before, Mayor, I just want to add to clarify, the street project, that Phase Two or Three or whatever it ends up being, we're not doing all of the streets. And so you potentially have two mixtures, you know, you have that existing red, and then you have potentially different. So I just want to clarify.
Yeah, I understand. Yep. Councilmember Edberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to focus on the public realm investments and costs for this part of the project. My understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, the primary public realm investments in this, in the parking lot project consists of some signage, noting public parking, publicly-owned parking, would be, including the lighting and the sidewalks. I'm unclear about how much vegetation we're talking about, and how many, not the oaks, but the other trees that might be purchased or installed. Can you, is that all of the public realm investments that are being called for in this proposal? And if so, how much of that budget is anticipated for the public realm material?
Mayor, members of the council, as far as, I'll call it, the public realm material, I don't have an exact breakout of every one of those costs that I'm going to pull out of my, pull out of the air at the moment. The, the lighting is going to be the most significant component of that. Adding a little bit of color to the concrete, or, you know, we're still going to put sidewalk in, whether it's a little bit added cost for the concrete. Trees, we're going to, we have some trees in the Armory Lot, the third, the fifth and Banning Lot. Now, I'm trying to get my direction straight again. We would be putting those in regardless of, typically, we would put those in regardless of, I'll call it, the, the study or not, anywhere we have those improvements that are required by code to add trees to vegetated medians within parking lots. There's a, one other dead tree in the Ace Lot, or the fifth and Banning Lot, that is dead, that we'll replace. Otherwise, it's the third and Banning Lot. I think there's one tree that we can add in one of the existing islands. So there's not a lot of opportunity, just the way that they originally designed and constructed. Like I said, the, replacing the lighting system is going to be the most significant component of that.
So I support the downward cast lighting. I think green is consistent with the other colors that we're using. I'm totally fine with that. I'm okay with the mix of acorn and downward casting. As you described, that all makes sense. I don't have strong feelings on the colors of concrete. I like the idea that there's some color distinctions, because I do think it helps guide and break up, at least when there's not snow and ice covering them. And so that all, that part all makes, makes sense. And the signage to align with the wayfinding, I can get on board with that. Here's something that the Environmental Advisory Commission met last week, following the really fine Public Works Open House event. Thank you very much for that. And heard from a, an extension educator, an arborist, a person well skilled in that, in that area. We are trying to, my, my issue is planting trees and being very intentional about species selection. We are planting into a built environment with a very small root mass area. And there, most of the species that we have historically put in do not require a greater root mass area. And because we're planting them in places where they're, as their roots go out, they're going to run into concrete or into, you know, other immovable objects, part of the reason that they don't, that we've not had great success in the, in the built environment downtown is because we're putting, trying to put trees into relatively small blocks that don't foster, don't support that tree to grow at and be sustainable at maturity and beyond. So I'm really skittish about saying, or at least I want some assurance or some guidance or some professional assessment on what are those species that have a ghost of a prayer of surviving to maturity, so that we're not getting something to a size that's usable, and then we cut it down because it can't, it can't thrive. And that gets really expensive and frustrating and creates all kinds of other obnoxious conversation. So at least as it pertains to whatever new trees you might be contemplating putting in, I would want, number one, assessment on what species are we talking about, and what evidence is there that, that they are suitable for the built environment that we're trying to plant them in. And then, while we're at it, since we're going to be having more conversation about trees and planting trees, I don't know if we need to start formulating or gathering or compiling a set of our recommended, internally-recommended practices for how we select, plant, and care for trees, whether that be in boulevards, downtown spaces, wherever. That's a topic that's going to come up. And I'm just flagging that and saying, that should be something that, since we don't have an, an arborist or a forester on staff, we need to go get ourselves smart on what that all looks like. And anyway, that's, those are my concerns. The, your, the response on budget was fine. I, I don't have an issue with that.
Any other comments? Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm staring at this map, and I'm listening to your presentation. I know this is really late in the game, but my overwhelming thought right now, and I'll express it, is why do we own that parking lot at Fifth and Cook that serves the bank? And then while we're on the subject, there's another one we own north of this neighborhood, on the edge of this neighborhood, next to the hotel. And I would ask the same question, why do we own that parking lot? Because it really serves the businesses, you know, that are, that are adjacent. So is there any thought, you know, it's late, and maybe this would be a thought, where we fix it up and then sell it. But we ought to think about, entertain the conversation, you know, why do we own these lots? Can we sell these lots? And then, and then get property tax revenue off of them, and also some money to help pay for the overall cost of all these other lots. So sell one and fix the other three, or fix all four, sell one to finance it, or sell two to finance it. Now, we're a little bit, you know, we're a public body, so we have to discuss this in, in public, which is awkward. You know, not very good business, but we don't have any choice. And also, I mean, we, you know, the owners of these, Bill, I assume somebody owns, I don't know who owns the fifth and Cook, you know, I don't know, there's a whole bunch of business and retail shops there.
Condo businesses.
Condo business, yeah. And then the bank, of course. So who, I don't know, I don't know who the landlord is, I don't have any idea. But, but, you know, we're at a bit of a disadvantage, because why would they buy it? We were maintaining the parking lot for their customers' use. Same with the hotel. Why in the heck would they ever buy it? So maybe the price wouldn't be that great, but the negotiation would be difficult. But, but we ought to entertain that, and maybe there is an interest to sell one or both of these lots. I'm just saying it in public today, to get it on the record, I guess. I don't want to derail this project. You could ever entertain a similar thought for the parking lot four, behind the Armory, although that's, that's much more, in my mind, public parking. That people in this town understand that as a public parking lot that they use when they come to town as a public parking lot. So that one, I think, is a little stronger case to keep that in our possession and upgrade it. But that's, that's just a thought I wanted to express as I'm listening to the presentation. Otherwise, I'm, I mean, I don't have strong feelings, but I think we're headed absolutely in the right direction with the lighting, the trees. Can I ask a question on the tree? You mentioned the, the parking lot two, Fifth and Banning. You said a tree has, there's a dead tree. Is it, the tree's already gone though, right? There's an empty spot on Banning with an empty spot where a tree was, I assume, a small tree along the, along the road there. Is that what you're talking about, or is there another tree that needs to actually come out and get replaced?
Mayor, members of the council, it's a, basically a dead tree, about, I don't know, 10 feet high with one twig sticking out of the top of it, kind of behind the dumpsters in the corner of that lot.
Okay. Well, there's another space, an empty space, that I assume there was, there's a square for a tree. It must have succumbed to Councilmember Edberg's discussion of how hard it is. But, so that, that's another opportunity, I think. I don't know if we'll get that now, or we get that when we do the streets.
Mayor, members of the council, all at, City Manager Crawford speak as well, if she, if I miss a topic here. But, so there are quite a number. So to Councilmember Edberg's comments, when the area, Fourth Street into the north was completed, trees were planted in such a way that they did not survive. You know, they, they make it 10, 15, 20 years maybe, and they're dying off. And we've slowly removed those.
Sidewalk.
Yeah, between the sidewalk and the curb line. So you only have about two, two or so feet that these trees are growing in. Not, you know, basically just, without a whole lot of thought, just, hey, we left a two-by-two-foot spot. We planted a little, you know, two-inch caliber tree, and we hope for the best. They do not survive in that environment, the little tree grates. They do not survive in that environment, the little tree grates, and they do die off. The struggle is, is that when they do die off, it is next to impossible to remove a root ball to then put a new tree in without removing pavement, sidewalk, at a significant cost to do that. Other communities that we talked to during the study do do that at a significant cost, or as, if you recall, and it will be a decision that will need to be made as we move into Phase Two of the project and the streets, and the reason we did not, you know, this is outside of the project area that Ms. Crawford had mentioned, but could move into the replacement of those trees in the future, but the area south of Fourth Street that were, would be in Phase Two had a, if you remember from the study, had a significant dollar amount for tree replacements. And what that does is it provides a growing medium, there's a number of different kind of proprietary style of plantings that are out there, but they provide a growth medium, they oftentimes will direct a corrugated storm sewer drains through there to kind of water it from the roots versus the surface. So there are a number of those systems that could be used to help promote growth of trees, the right tree selections, things like that in a downtown area.
When we dig it all up.
When we dig it all up. So, and again, that could transfer to the area north of Fourth Street as well, if we wanted, if we find it successful to the south, we could move to the north and do that. So even as you go to the north, you see all the little planting beds with a few flowers in them, those were trees used to be.
Just to add to Mr. Copy's statements, that is something that the city did at Boatworks, and it's worked very well, so we, you know, we've had limited projects that we've really been methodical, needed to be methodical about, but we have done it in the past, I think, to success. You tell me if I'm wrong, right, you live there, but, so that's, that is what we'd be looking to do within the street project. So I think, you know, the trees along the sidewalk on Banning wouldn't be part of this, but the trees within that parking lot is what Mr. Copy has been talking about.
Then, so then my last comment would just be, you're on target with colors and lights, and the concurrent proposal is, I echo the mayor's comments, practical, financially responsible to move forward.
What is the ballpark itemized cost? I know we've had it in previous meetings on this, of Lot Three?
To, for complete reconstruction?
Yeah, whatever we have, whatever we're planning on doing.
That one was...
Councilmember Walsh's point.
That one was, if I'm going to recall correctly, roughly $500,000 for the lighting system, the...
No, for Lot Three, the...
Correct. The entire project cost is about $1.4 million, and I'm going to probably...
Lot Three?
Three, no, I'm thinking Lot Two. You're like, man, that's...
Because I was about to say, Councilmember Walsh is right, let's kill that one right now.
That'll be, that'll be less than $50,000.
Okay. Okay. All right. Because I, I kind of am warmed to that idea of, I'd be fine parting ways with that, because most people don't really know that that's city parking anyways, but as long as it's within the realm of, if we did part ways, we're not like hundreds of thousands of dollars committed into improvements, then I think that can be decided at a later day, if it really has kind of run its normal wear life, and then we can make that decision, but I'm open to that in the future, because I think that does make sense. I don't know who would want to buy it, and I wouldn't want to give it away or give it away cheap, but there are some businesses that are directly benefiting from that, to the exclusion of kind of everyone else and people that don't know about it, so it's a good thought.
Mayor, Councilmember Walsh, to those thoughts, that's strictly a policy decision, I'm just going to weigh in as City Manager. The mobility and parking study did look at identifying additional parking options for people, and we've been talking about finding parking, and with better wayfinding, I would hope that Parking Lot Three would be used for the public, another option that we had talked about, you know, that we haven't really dove into, and we'll see how this lands, but is pay-to-park, and perhaps if there are specific lots that are only benefiting certain, certain businesses, perhaps that's a discussion in the future.
Well, you raised a good point about the wayfinding, and it's sort of like message to the community, use it or lose it. I'm not saying I'm going to preordain that we're going to get rid of it, but as we go through this, know that it's there, so market festgoers that are circling around saying, where can I find a spot, or you're downtown and you can't find a place to go, hey, that's the city lot that isn't owned by the bank or those condominium, business condominiums, so use it, park there, I want to see it full, from just residents coming and going. So I think we've got a good communications opportunity with that, to have people use the new, newly-redone parking lot. All right, any other thoughts on this? Councilmember West.
Thank you, Mayor. I, the lighting is fine, I think that's good, the color is fine for the lighting. For the sidewalks, you know, I, I don't really care about what the color is, I think something that makes it unique, like those diamonds or something, is perfectly fine. I'm really more concerned about sort of the eight, making sure that we're focused and meeting the ADA requirements. I know that has been a concern from a lot of people in the community recently, and so I just want to make sure that that, that is, is focused on. And the mayor's asked for, for us to speak positively about the tree, so I will positively...
Well, the project.
I will positively say, I would like to follow the Environmental Advisory Committee recommendation and keep the fourth tree with the pruning later on and the assessment after that.
Councilmember Hughes.
Mr. Copy, do you have any idea how much it's going to cost the city to keep, will there be additional costs for what you were talking about on the burr oaks that are remaining? You were talking about mulching them and spraying them and doing all sorts of really fancy things.
Mayor, members of the council, so from a, in speaking with Rainbow Tree Care to do the, the two-line chestment borer and the canastat treatment for the three trees, just a one-time thing for kind of help with through construction, that would be about $1,000, a little over $1,000, you know, $1,000 to $1,200. So that being said, that's kind of a one-time thing, it's good for two to three years, just to get us through that construction component. Outside of that, to put the mulch in there is not a bad thing, it's a relatively hard area with the tree canopy above it to maintain or get grass to grow. The other option would be, would be to put irrigation in there to get grass to grow, so it's kind of a, to do the mulch and maybe some other native plantings, things like that, to keep people off of it. Mulch is relatively cheap overall, the, to do that, it's, we'll cut down on man hours to try to maintain it and mow it, and so, kind of a wash on that standpoint from a maintenance, at least the turf maintenance standpoint of it.
So you're talking about taking all the grass out that's around the tree?
You know, typically, you just, not necessarily, but typically, you would do that, you know, I'll call, it'd be a larger ring around kind of that tree area, there would still be mowed turf outside of that, but...
Oh, okay, so you would keep some grass?
Yeah.
On it? Okay. And as far as that one remaining tree is concerned, I mean, I know there are people in my ward that want to keep it, I have heard lately from people who would actually just like parking, so I think it's kind of coming up a little bit more, and I guess my concern is, you know, this is a taxpayer-funded parking lot, and it's, what's its highest and best use for the taxpayer dollar? And, I mean, I struggle, because some of the taxpayers want to keep the tree regardless of the cost, and so that's kind of the struggle, is that at some point, it's like, where does the cost-benefit analysis come down to keeping something that, that then we have to either continue to pay for or that fails, and then we're, we're left with as it is. I mean, if you want to call for a vote on it, go for it, but I just don't know that, I don't know how hard I would want to push for keeping that fourth tree and the location it is for the cost that it's going to be for other taxpayers, I guess is my thought there, just really came out mangled.
No, that's okay, but just for a reminder to the council, the proposal as the resolution before us includes removing that fourth tree, keeping the three, so that's currently what is before us, and that, that would be the result if we did pass the resolution.
Yep. Before you go on, could we hear if you're comfortable sharing about lighting and sidewalk? I could, just left it, because I didn't, because I thought it was fine. I mean, I like the lights that you've picked out, those down acorns, I mean, I'm not a huge dark skies, like, ooh, proponent, but frankly, if we just wanted to move to a completely dark skies light in the parking lot, I'd be fine with that, especially for how high they are, but I assume that those are pretty minimal, you know, with the amount of light that's coming out, and I guess I'd be more sold on the, on the, I mean, I recognize that the red striping now on the sidewalk is sort of looking pink, but I'd probably be more inclined to keep it that color, but I don't have a huge dog in that fight. I would like to have a minor stamp in it, because I just think it'd be kind of weird to have it be gray and then red with no fake brick stamping at all, but if you went to a different color, I guess I would just suggest go to a different color, don't get like two shades close, you know what I mean? Like either do it the brick red or whatever, but what I don't want is to have to come back and like repaint it, like we're doing in the medians there along 61, that's so weird, might not get it, but let's not do that, let's not do something that requires like summer maintenance.
Mayor, members of the council, so there's a slight difference in the colored concrete in the medians, so what that is, is the, kind of the, the rock look is actually cast in as gray concrete, and each one of those rocks is hand-painted. So somebody went out and painted each one of those rocks, and we have to put a sealer on top of it to kind of keep that color, otherwise, we'd have to have somebody come in and repaint each of those rocks again. The concrete that we would use downtown is integral to the mixture of the concrete, so it's, when you, it's not just a surface treatment, so when you break that concrete open, it's red from top to bottom. So it's a little bit different of a product, it doesn't need, like anything, you can put sealer on concrete, the problem is, is it creates a slippery surface, so typically, anywhere that we're, have pedestrian traffic, you're not putting a sealer on top of it. Out in the median, it's glossy-looking, it's, it can be slippery, but no one's walking out there, so, again, it's an appropriate product, obviously, it's, you know, we would look at, is that the appropriate thing to do in all cases? Probably not, but would be, you know, looked at at future projects if that were the look that we were going for.
All right, we have a resolution before us ordering improvements, approving plans and specifications, and authorizing advertisement for bids. I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution before us. Do I have a second? Motion, a second. Any further discussion on this?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if we can make an amendment to approve it with the fourth, keeping the fourth tree? Am I doing this correctly?
Yep, so if, I know what direction you want to go, so you would make a motion to amend the resolution to include keeping the fourth tree in the Ace parking lot?
Yes.
Is that the direction you want to go? Okay, so we have a motion before us to amend the resolution to include keeping the fourth tree. Is there a second on that motion?
A second for purposes of discussion.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending the resolution to include keeping the fourth tree, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Guy. Sorry. All right, let's keep the tree. Amend. I guess I, maybe I even missed that moment now, since I came back and do it.
That's okay, so I'm just going to revote it, just for clarity and for the record. All those in favor of the motion to amend the resolution to include keeping the fourth tree, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so the motion carries, the resolution is amended now to, we'll say for purposes of the meeting minutes, removing, the cutting down of the fourth tree, or emphatically and expressly saying, we're going to keep the fourth tree. Do I need to re-motion on that as amended, or are we good? It's before us, okay. So, any further discussion on the resolution that's before us, that's been voted, motioned and seconded as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, the resolution is passed as amended. Item eight, new business, nothing scheduled, item nine, nothing scheduled. Item 10, communications from the city manager. Ms. Crawford, whenever your slides are ready.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, the filing period is open for our 2025 municipal election, so positions that are up this year are Mayor, Ward Two and Ward Four, and just, these are the current filings as of about 4:00 PM today. So for Mayor, Mary Niklowski has filed, Ward Two, Ellen Garola, and Ward Four, existing Councilmember Kevin Edberg. So just giving everybody an update, the filing period is open through 5:00 PM on June 3rd, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Anything, nothing before us, then entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.